Wow. Should be. That's got your ass, Kathy.
I think she's upcoming then.
She is, okay. We're hoping just wait a couple of minutes for Kathy Conley to show up.
Um, I think Tavis is gonna, are you representing them, Tavis?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
We'll wait for Kathy.
But never mind that.
Okay, so they'll be knowing your following order.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get too many happens. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at eight thirty-one AM. So first up on the agenda today, we have Horizon's Engineering, Engineering here and we have to D E S to kick off a stormwater asset management plan meeting. Good morning.
Morning, thank you. My name is Tavis Austin. I'm a new project manager with Horizons Engineering. Uh, one of the projects that has been uh gifted to me is the Woodstock Asset Management Plan for Stormwater Assets. As you're probably aware, you know, the town received a thirty thousand dollar uh stormwater asset management grant. Uh, that needs to be completed by October of this year. Uh, the good news is prior to my coming on with Horizons, uh, much of the field work for this project has been done. That is to say that Horizons has gone out and looked at all of the stormwater assets and gathered various characteristics uh of the assets within the community. Um, but some of the requirements for the grant uh are two required meetings. I think uh I've coordinated with Sarah Riddler who's on the call here from D E S. Um, and she is allowing the town, if you're willing, uh, to combine the kickoff meeting and the level of service meeting uh for the stormwater asset management plan. But typically with the kickoff meeting, we establish who the team is going to be. I'm assuming in that case, that's going to be the Board of Selectmen? Question mark. Uh, you could also include your Public Works Director if you wanted. Uh, you don't have to set up a separate committee um or incur more meetings. I know how much fun they are at the town level to have more committee meetings for projects. Um, but this is something that can likely be done simply with the selectmen. And I don't know, and Sarah, you can guide me because I haven't done one of these before. Is there, are there required elements to the kickoff meeting other than establishing the team and the work schedule?
So there's, there's not required elements to the meeting and you know, Woodstock has recently been through their their wastewater asset management plan as well with, with Horizons also. So I think, you know, we're all probably pretty familiar. I do usually just take a few minutes to talk about the grant um and I can do that now or later depending on how you want to go through things.
No, that sounds fine.
Okay, um, so as Tavis said, you do have a thirty thousand dollar grant and I know you have already started the work partly because you were doing the wastewater system. So I think some of the field work made sense to combine. The grant, as Tavis mentioned, has a completion date of October first of twenty twenty-five. And that's a very uh key date to keep in mind, particularly because this grant is funded with ARPA dollars and those dollars have a very specific timeline with them. So we really have to be mindful of that completion date. And that date is the last day any work can be reimbursed by this grant um to, you know, has to be completed on that date, no later uh to be reimbursed. So as we get closer to the date, I'll remind you, but um you can submit a dispersment request after that date, as long as it covers just up until that date. So um, a lot of times we get that question at the end because um you'll be trying to finish right at the, the very end. Um, so you know, we could receive it in late October uh as long as it didn't cover any, anything past that October first date. Um, I just want to mention you do have already the approved engineering contract that's already um in place and, and some work has been completed, which is great. Um, I don't, I'm checking my records right now to see if you have submitted any dispersment requests under this one. Um, and it, I'm not sure if you have, I'm just looking. There may have been one. It looks like. Um, so I think you've already submitted your first dispersment request under this particular grant. So that's good because um we do usually ask that you do that within six months of it being approved. So we're past that point now. Um, so if you do have questions about that process, I think Judy has been involved in that before. And if there are questions, um, feel free to reach out. They do go to a different person than me. So sometimes it gets confusing, but I can always help connect the dots as we get to that point. As Tavis mentioned, we'll, we'll go through level of service today, it sounds like, which is good. And then other required elements, we'll need to see uh some kind of a training take place and a wrap-up meeting, which I should be involved in. And I will also ask for the opportunity to review the report that gets prepared as part of the project. So I guess, that being said, just keep me in the loop because I will sign off on these things as we go through because they're, they're grant requirements. I do want to also ask that Tavis, please take some notes. It looks like he probably already is and share them with all of us after the meeting. So I can document that we had this, this uh required meeting for the project. I also just always give opportunity, are there particular questions about the grant funding or anything I could answer that would be helpful right now?
I don't have any. I don't know the town, but.
No questions here.
Great, okay. Well, I am always available to you. You'll use me as your point of contact. Any questions, feel free, anytime. I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so I believe that includes the quote-unquote kickoff meeting, if you will. I have notes as Sarah was asking for for that portion of this. Uh, really, the level of service meeting is uh, for me, it's to decide what the town wants to get out of the project. Obviously, there's going to be an accounting of stormwater assets and their current condition. Some evaluation of replacement costs. Uh, one of the questions I have when it comes to replacement costs is just confirming that the town does or does not maintain its own bridges. Because some of the assets in the uh plan are bridges and I would anticipate that D O T is typically responsible for the bridges. Is that correct? Okay, I see some nodding. Um, I mentioned that because some of the research I've been doing, there's a number of red listed bridges in Woodstock. And if those become Woodstock's responsibility, that becomes a very expensive thing for the town to contemplate.
No, no.
Okay, good. That makes it uh quite a bit more reasonable to do this. So one of the things, uh, is it possible to share a screen or I can just read a bunch of things to you?
Yep, you can share a screen. I have no glasses. I can write, but I can't see. Are you all set, Tavis?
Here we are.
Yeah, should be all set.
So one of the first steps to look at um is establishing a mission statement uh for the asset management plan. I don't know if it's critical that you land on a mission statement today. I'm looking for Sarah to nod or shake her head as I go through some of these phases. Uh, but the plan itself will need to have a mission statement. What is the intent of the plan? Uh, so the two that I have up on the screen right now are sort of generic phrases. One is actually from the D E S Asset Management Plan Handbook itself. Uh, that's the second one here. Um, you can tailor this, modify this, et cetera, uh, for the town's intent. Uh, the top one is what I've put together. Um, because when you're looking at stormwater assets, particularly in a town that doesn't have a large system of closed system drainage, one of the things I looked at is the, the community impact of the infrastructure itself. So not only is the, are the assets conveying uh stormwater, but it's also directly and indirectly related to the town's wetlands and riverine systems, et cetera. So I like the idea of maintaining public health protection, performance of stormwater assets while maintain minimizing long-term costs of operating those assets. And start to make the most effective renewable and replacement investments to provide highest quality customer service. Customer service in this case, you know, where traditional asset management plan as you did with the wastewater is making sure that the storm, you know, the wastewater system works. It's a little bit different when you look at your customer services, the entire community with regard to stormwater assets. Does that make sense to folks?
Sounds great, Tavis.
Okay, do you have a preference on either of these or do you want to take some time separately to work out uh a separate mission statement?
I don't know. I like the first one that you came up with.
Yep. Yep, first one looks good.
I tell you, this is a really tough crowd. Uh, this project is going to take a long time. Okay.
And I, Tavis, I just wanted to address because you did ask me, it's not critical if you, if you do want to change it or if you come up with something later, even as we get through the report, if you want to make modifications, that's fine. So no, no need to commit to it today if you don't feel comfortable or you just want to keep the door open to change it later too. That's fine.
So then we use this right now as your general operating goal uh for the report. Uh, the next system is obviously to go out and do all the data collection. I'd suggested before that we'd already largely done all of that data collection. And then what you come up with is a series of level of service goals. Again, the, you know, for me, the asset management plan has historically been done with water and sewer. So it's very easy to say we're going to do X amount of pipe a year, X number of valves a year. Or improve the system in this area over the next X period of time, et cetera. In Woodstock, largely the stormwater system uh is largely stream crossings. So I put together some, again, some generic goals. Uh, I've gone through, it does not appear that the Woodstock budget has a standalone budget line, if you will, or operating budget for stormwater infrastructure. It appears that it's generally funded, you know, when something breaks. Uh, or all of a sudden we had a flood and clearly the system over here doesn't work anymore. Uh, then it's sort of a, a reactionary response to something going wrong in the system. I anticipate that Public Works Department or the Highway Crew regularly does some ditch cleaning. But why not include with that ditch cleaning, an investigation of the culvert that the ditch is leading to? So that formally turns into annual or bi-annual inspection of stormwater assets. This is something we can work on over time. We can come up uh with an action plan that says, you know, every two years, we can confidently say that we've looked at every culvert or stream crossing in the town to see if there's a change. These are the fancy ways of writing that stuff up. But it's a way of coming up with a, a uh, a checklist item. You know, while we're there, we looked at the following things and we evaluated the following conditions. This is not something that you have to be particularly trained for. Most people can look at a culvert and say, that looks clogged. How clogged does it look? You know, what, what is our mechanism for addressing this? And also, you know, going quickly through the Woodstock regulations, there don't appear to be much of a um development requirement for private development. You know, it doesn't seem to be a strict mechanism for the planning board to say, if you're putting in X size parking lot, that water needs to be treated on site, or this is the rate at which you're allowed to discharge that into our system. Again, your system is the roadside ditches in the streams. So perhaps considering stormwater regulations for development uh is a level of service that you could look at. Again, I mentioned the, the funding mechanism. Currently, there doesn't seem to be a line item, so the town might want to consider putting together you know, a capital improvement program for stormwater infrastructure. Not to say that you have to say this culvert on this road, but perhaps a capital reserve fund uh or similar gets set up through long-range planning for stormwater assets. And I would anticipate Sarah would let us add to these goals as the plan develops. Uh, but if there are particular things that the board has in mind, um, I'd love to hear it now so that as I write the report, I can address those goals. Another option is to say, here's the draft report such as it is. You know, built into the level of service goals will be training, whether that is a, a goal to have D E S hosted training for Public Works employees, so they know what they're looking for, or whether that is to have Horizons establish an ongoing training program for the town to consider. All of those things can be contemplated. Are there any questions on level of service goals? Do you like the looks of these? Want to see where it goes? Do you want to add others? I just need the feeling of the group.
They're just saying, we do have a capital reserve that can be used for this, but we're thinking you might be right. We should probably maybe separate part of that out for this.
It, it's possible. Uh, one of the things that uh I'll be doing with this project is coming up with a replacement cost for some of these assets. And once you start to get a picture of what you know, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five values are for replacing these assets, you might want to evaluate. One, is it a separate capital reserve or do we just increase uh the annual contribution for some of these? You know, I don't have hard data in front of me right now that suggests that thirty, fifty, ninety percent of your infrastructure is close to failure. So I don't think you have to necessarily contemplate millions of dollars, especially now that we took bridges off the table. But you know, um, a recent culvert crossing I did in the nearby, or stream crossing in the nearby community, um, the culvert replacement, the, the culvert itself was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So if the current contribution in the capital reserve fund is five or ten thousand dollars a year, you see how that very quickly gets depleted. If one asset fails. But the, you know, the, one of the points of this program is to say, this is, this is what we saw. This is how we are sort of ranking and rating, if you will, the stormwater assets. And this is what we anticipate the cost would be. Now, the anticipated cost I'll be putting together is this pipe comes out, this pipe goes in. You know, I have no way of knowing what the contractor is going to add on top, what the cost of the permitting is going to be, if there's additional mitigation funding on top of the replacement itself. So all of those things can be sort of sussed out in the final report. Does that make sense? Okay, you have to understand in, in the view I have, I see board members' heads and some public, so. If you need very demonstrative head gestures if, if we're all on the same page. Um, and again, I guess at this point, if there aren't questions, I'll ask Sarah if there's something else that should be included in the level of service goals discussion at this point.
Tavis, I think, I think you have a pretty good list. I think sometimes something that comes up particularly for stormwater is if there are areas of town that are known to be flooding areas or problem areas. Sometimes those get addressed through the level of service goals. And then you know, as much as you can make these goals, what we call smarter goals, so they should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound, and then the E R is for evaluate and redo. Um, so I, I guess the point there is make sure they're kind of numeric values, you know, so I, I see that you have like annual, bi-annual inspection. That's good. So you know, once or twice a year. And then you know, just think about how you can make them something that could be counted, I guess, or you know, a percentage, some, some number could be.
My thought with that one is to drill, you know, not just leave it as annual, bi-annual inspection, but annual, you know, we're going to do an annual inspection of at least X number of assets, bi-annual inspection of X number of assets. I put the checklist in there so that you could go through the checklist and say, we saw these things on an annual, bi-annual basis or based on finding X at this asset, we've decided to up that to an annual inspection versus a bi-annual inspection, things along that line. And that would go right along with the training so that the public knows, hey, weren't they just looking at that pipe last year? Why are they doing that again? You know, I have a uh, a template, if you will, of a, a brochure that explains why the town is doing this. You know, we got this money. We're trying to protect your asset, your money. Um, and we're doing this um, more obvious and regular um maintenance program to make sure that we're making the best use of the town's dollars.
And you can, you can consider it as either maybe a percentage of the total system or a number, depending on how it makes sense to put in the report. And then the other thing is, you know, like I mentioned, problem flooding areas. A lot of times the town may have a list that they know, like I'm thinking of culverts is, is one that there's usually kind of the list of problem culverts that you know, after a big storm, you're going to go out or before the big rainfall, you're going to go out and make sure they're clear. Um, and sometimes it's something the town might already be doing and maybe it's not documented um as clearly as it could be, or it's in somebody's head, or they keep a list on their desk. Uh, but you know, thinking about the things that you're already doing to address some of the stormwater issues in town and how you might capture those in this report is a good idea. Um, and like I, I mentioned, I know a town that was, you know, they had their, kind of, they call them their problem culverts. They go out before a big storm and check all of them to make sure they're clear. So if you have something like that, that maybe isn't even formally documented, but that you could document as part of this, that's a good idea to do that and incorporate it into your, your asset management plan.
That sound okay to the team?
Sounds good.
I'm telling you, Sarah, this is a tough crowd. Well, I, I think, I think we have managed uh the successful kickoff and level of service meeting for now. Um, I will sort of flush this out. I will put the notes together uh that I have. Maybe Judy can send me the transcript that comes from this meeting itself and I'll use that to flush out more of the official meeting minutes that I'll share with Sarah. Uh, the minutes don't appear to be something usually included in the report, correct?
Correct. Usually I just, I save them in my folder to document that we had this meeting. Um, so nothing, nothing super formal, I guess, from my end. It's just something that documents it and keeps the notes of what we, what we discussed, so we, we can refer back to.
Okay. Well, unless anyone has any questions, um, I'm going to get going on pulling this report together now that we have um, at least a preliminary mission statement and level of service goals. Yes, I'll work on putting some uh metrics with those goals. And then we will look at pulling together a training session. One of my goals for this, not only to, you know, dot the proverbial i's and cross the t's for D E S for the grant compliance, but for those that don't know, my background for the past twenty-some years has been municipal planning. And one of the things that always irks me is when towns uh receive grant funding for a report and it ends up on a shelf. Uh, I want to make sure this is something that becomes a, a working tool for the town. This should be something that helps you put together your annual budgets, uh, your annual C I P, your capital reserve. So one of the things I want to make sure gets in the level of service goals, it's not only grant compliance, but something that becomes useful to the town. This is something, you know, I, I don't want to say an ongoing homework assignment, but this is something, what did we accomplish this year? What would we like to accomplish next year? How do we need to suss this out? And then even outside the grant, I'd like to be able to make sure that the document is workable in such a way that you can track your progress over time. Because it can be, you know, I don't want it to become something like the master plan where, oh, well, we haven't done the water quality section of the master plan for ten years. We should do something. Uh, this is, this should be a, a helpful tool for the town to use uh for stormwater assets. And with that, I guess, unless there's any questions, um, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Very informative.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be in touch. Thanks, Sarah.
Have a good day. Right, so first up, uh, we have the non-public minute, meeting minute from September twenty-seventh.
I make a motion to accept those minutes.
And seal them. Yep, all those in favor? Uh, next up, we have workshop minutes from November first. Any additions or changes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the workshop.
All those in favor? Um, next up, we have workshop minutes from December third.
Make a motion to accept the workshop.
Next up, we have uh, non-public minutes from the summer third. I make a motion to accept those minutes and seal them.
Second.
All those in favor? Next, we have uh, workshop minutes from December sixth.
You accept the workshop minutes from December sixth?
All those in favor? Meeting minutes from December tenth.
Make a motion to accept the.
Second.
All those in favor? Make motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes from December tenth and to seal them. All of the second. All those in favor? Um, next up, we have the meeting minutes from that's, yeah, meeting minutes from the uh joint select board and budget committee meeting on December eighteenth.
Motion to accept those minutes.
All those in favor? Uh, next up, we have workshop minutes from December nineteenth. Um, do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
All those in favor? I make a motion to accept to accept the non-public meeting minutes from January seventh and to seal them. Do I have a second? All those in favor? We have workshop minutes from January sixteenth.
Second.
All those in favor? Next up, we have meeting minutes from January, um, workshop minutes from January twenty-fourth.
No, uh, did we do sixteen?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Gil and Scott.
I did not send sixteen, so I'm sorry.
Let's start. Okay. Sixteen, so now I went on to workshop minutes from January twenty-fourth.
Okay, that's what I have here.
Motion to accept the minutes to the workshop on January twenty-fourth.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? And lastly, I make a motion to accept and seal the minutes from the non-public meeting on January twenty-fourth. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Nice work.
Been a lot.
It's been a lot.
Been a busy, busy month.
Been a busy year.
All right, next up, we have, um, Mike is on. Yeah. Um, Mike, do you, you have a couple of questions for us?
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Um, can I ask a couple of questions about the presentation that was just done, or you want me to wait till public participation to fall under? Business of today. Okay, uh, number one, is that a hundred percent grant, or is it a matching grant, or how how? Hundred percent, okay. Couple of years ago, the town rejoined, I believe it was North Country Council. And when you did that presentation, one of the things that they offered was. To come in and do a COVID inventory of the town at no cost. Um, part of the service of joining them again. And I had asked, you know, were you gonna do that? Did that ever get, did you ever take advantage of that offer?
Good question.
No, we did not.
I think we already started on this grant.
This was several years ago when you re- rejoined, how long have you been working on this grant?
A year, year, year and a half, I think.
I think if you look.
When this grant came up, you guys talked about that, you chose to go to, when you were looking at it, DES had all this money, you could just go. Keep it in line with what you were doing.
We've gone, we've moved back to North Country Council for two years.
So this is about the same time that happened, Mike, and I think we discussed it.
Alright, it just seemed like.
This is a pretty, a lot more comprehensive, I think, study than they would do.
Right, except like you heard what that guy said, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to look at a COVID pipe to find out if it's plugged or not plugged and. You know, inventorying it's pretty simple, it's just, I don't know, to me, it's just a shame that we didn't take advantage of something that we're paying for. And, but I guess you're gonna get it now anyways. Um, okay, I'll move on to what I was asking to be on the agenda for. I wanted to talk to you about a few items on the waterline, the pa- the waterlines in town, number one. Was uh, the asset management plan that was done, has that been totally completed?
Yes.
Okay, did you have a final public haring on it? And maybe I missed it, like you did the storm, the sewer?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I assume I can get. Yes, please. Part of that asset management plan was, there was some funding set aside in it to. Um, acquire some GPS equipment so that you could, the town could. Have electronic filings of waterline location, valving, curb stops, anything that has to do with it. Did that ever get purchased?
We just got that.
So you have.
And then uh, what it's using is be automatically uploaded to the. They have been here with software, but it's gonna be automatically uploaded to the GIS mapping.
So you ended up getting the GPS equipment, though?
Yes. We just don't know that, we have not had the training yet.
Had not had the training, so that's gonna happen, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the next thing I wanted to ask you about was. On December tenth, meeting you, you presented it, Scott, to sign a contract with Horizons to look into the. River crossing at five in Maine, but there wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot of information, so I put in a request a couple of weeks ago. For the information on him, so.
Last week, I responded on the Friday, Friday was a week.
Now you got it, but I'm trying to find out what, as I told you, I I was, what I was looking for is what's the actual scope of work of that, are you just?
Bottom, bottom line, the scope of work, Mike, is they're just gonna repair what's there, uh, they fills the waterline here, it's okay, we just have to repair the bumper. That protects the waterline, and that's in the budget this year. Ninety thousand dollars to do that, so that will be done this this spring and summer.
Yeah, so that's, that's just what you. Think it's gonna happen is just gonna put more rock in the river to cover it, to give it some armoring for protection.
I believe, I don't know, I'm not, you know. We run out of total scope yet, but he gave us that budget.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm getting through, did anybody give any thought to possibly? You know, it's outside of the box a little bit, but um, either having a, let's say, a sidewalk. An independent sidewalk crossing and suspend the waterline from that. Or look into burying it across that rigid frame structure that's there, the bridge. Um, they can be buried, um, I did the same thing up on Route three at Bogbrook Road when I rebuilt that bridge up there. The town put their waterline underneath the sidewalk across there, or attach it to the outside of the bridge, because as you know, this. The scouring effect, you know, we got some, you know, it just continues to happen, and I. You know, I'm not saying that's the best way to do it, but at least investigate it and see if that's an option. Has that been talked about with me?
I will do that, Mike. I think that it's logical to look at that, just see what the cost would be, or evaluate what the cost would be and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I that's, I understand, that's why I'm asking, instead of just, you know. Putting your head down, going forward, saying, okay, we're gonna bury it in the river again, but maybe find an alternate solution that may work better and save us. Twenty-five years from now, it ain't been that long since that waterline was put across the river, twenty-five years, something like that. And maybe we won't have to go down this road again, um. Yeah, I'm having high time hearing you, but um. No, that's why I was wondering if you could ask the engineers, that's why I was trying to get the scope of work of what it was that you directed them to do, if it's just simply, you know. Let's throw a rock in the river, spend a hundred grand, and then it washes out, and who knows how long, maybe it'll never wash out, maybe it'll wash out next year. And maybe look at an alternative way of doing it, that's all, I was just wondering if anybody was thinking a little bit outside the box, I guess.
No, that's a great point, Mike, and I I'm I'm happy to look, take that on.
Okay, um, the other thing with the green bridge down there, with what's gonna be happening there, repairing that and so forth. Did anybody have any conversations with the state as far as making provisions for down the road? If we wanted to run a waterline across that bridge, um.
That's what I was thinking, honestly.
Um, but, you know, as, you know, the job's already been put out to bid and everything, but still, it ain't too late. Somebody needs to contact the state and start the conversations, and a lot of that is who you talk to and how you talk to them. Fortunately, I I've been in that position with them, um, but I think it would be. A benefit for the town to at least look into, and I'm not saying you gotta put the waterline across now, but, you know, they put penetrations in the abutments or. Or rollers underneath, whatever it takes, so that in the future. If we need to run a waterline across there, it's just a matter of putting it in, I would think it would be very helpful. You know, beneficial for the town if somebody reached out to somebody at state level and had these conversations. It's just a suggestion, I guess.
Thank you.
The other thing I had on water was. I understand you've hired a new water company, I've been trying to watch it, and 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 figure out where you're at with that, I guess. But was any thought given before you went down this road, as far as bringing it back in-house with an operator that works for the town?
Yes. And in fact, I talked to a couple of people while we're thinking about it, um. But I I just think, I think the redundancy thing is the thing we're, we're looking at, is that. If if we have one operator with the license that they leave, then we're in the same position again, which is why I think they went down the shore in the first place. Where we hire a company that has several licenses, someone leaves, it's still their problem, I mean. So that we don't have to always keep, I think it'd be great to have someone in the house, and I, but uh. And we looked at costs, everything, and we don't really think we save much money.
I, of course, everybody has opinion, but I differ on that, cuz. I don't know, I've asked, I I put in a request for this contract also, soon as I get it, I can learn more about it, but. Can you tell me off the top of your head roughly what the contract is, hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand, hundred ten?
No, it doesn't, it was less than what we're paying Pena Chuck, right?
But, yeah, but I don't know that is either, so.
No, we can give you that, no problem, and I.
Maybe it'll work, uh, you guys need to do some workshops more, and looking into it, I really see the benefits of having a. An on, uh, an employee operator in the town, you got them eight hours a day, not ten minutes a day. I mean, I, and I I've said this before, I used to watch Pena Chuck, I'd make it, I had nothing else to do in my life right now, so I'd make it. Part of my day, I'd watch them come in, they'd come by my garage, I'd follow them down, sit there and watch them, it was times they'd be there ten minutes. Most of the time, they're never in town more than half an hour, and I understand Pena Chuck's gone, but still. You'd have a man eight hours a day, you could use him for other parts of the public works department, the right person. Um, he could work also, I'm not saying operate the sewer plant, but. Uh, after reading that asset management report, there's plenty of work that I see could be done by somebody like this, you got twenty-six manholes that haven't seen the. The light of day in years in that report, somebody's gotta go out and dig them up. Expose them, check them out, I mean, there's all kinds of work that needs to be done, and I just see a benefit of having a man eight hours a day. Instead of half an hour a day. Even if it costs a little bit more, you're gonna get so much more out of it, and I just think that it really needs to be looked into. And you've heard this phone me before, I guess, so, um, wherever you go with it, you go with it.
Thank you, Jared.
Then I, I guess the next thing I wanted to move on to was town's website. Is there something that can be done so that uh? More information can be on there in a timely fashion, up until yesterday, there really, there wasn't any. Updates on the agenda for the select board since September seventeenth. That's just a long time, somebody that's trying to follow what's going on and and acquire information, being me, that's what I, and. It's just discouraging that when there's no information there, and then as far as the Zoom. The recordings, if they could be posted in a more timely fashion so that people can. I mean, it is a tool, and we ought to be using it, and I think a lot of people, I talked to, had different people ask me about it, and. Why isn't things being posted? A lot of people don't like to come forward and talk to you people, or not you particular, but just in public. And, um, so that's why you're not hearing a lot about it, I think, but it needs to be more of a timely fashion so that people can be. Aware what's going on in their town. Um, I guess that's all I really had to, to ask you about.
Well, the, the meeting minutes are gonna be back up.
I think we just got over the line, Mike, with so much going on. I think you're right.
No, alright, I, like I said, I'll, I I'll follow up in a little while, cuz I I'm really. Really think this, the operation of the water treatment, or the water plant. Is something that really needs to be looked into, I think the benefit, that's really my main thing, I think the benefit you'll get out of it. Um, it would be huge for you, to have an in-house operator. Um, and it's just like any position, it's gotta be the right person, and it takes a while to find that person, I understand all that, but they are out there. Um, that and the, the crossing down there, before that gets to, the horse gets too far out of the bind on that, if a couple of questions could be asked to the engineers. About another way of. Of approaching that crossing, and you said you're taking it on, Scott, and. If you would like to ask me any questions about ones that I've done in the past, call me up, I'll, I'm more than willing to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old or other business we brought forward? There's something we forgot.
These are new businesses you are?
Um, well, that would be under old business, the EV chargers.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I just, the new thing is the um, you know, the Main Street, what went on, you know.
Oh, the water thing.
Everybody really checked in.
You guys, especially, I think, standing out there and helping.
But I think, no, it's not, I didn't do anything, just mid-moral support, I was there. Gil was out there during traffic, but I think, what really showed up is that we really used, let's sit down, do some research into where we find out what's going on. It may cost a little money, but we can't, that was only the problem, is that we didn't have good maps or good. No, we need, we need to, we need to look at it, we need to figure out what's going on, and we need to know where this stuff is and what it's made of.
Yeah, so, well, and thank you to, we had the post one out, but obviously Mike and his crew, little young Mike Donaghy and. And Jimmy, and then Rex Calder and his team.
Oh, yeah.
Calder Construction.
Yeah, Jimmy, Jimmy and, you know, um, and the case are down in that hole, knee deep in ice cold water for hours, you know, it's like. Called a tough, tough job. They're here, but they're not right.
Well, what we, what we got left.
We went through them. Well, look at the Main Street.
You go down and see what we were left, and we'll leave it there.
There was a valve coming down there, you pulled out, had the mats in the water and stuff.
I'm sure there was when you left.
Anyway, put it this way, if they are there, we need to go over them more and make sure we know better what's going on, so.
Who's in charge and cleaning the valves out?
That was Pena Chuck, yes, absolutely, and that was not done. No, that was not done, that was one of the things I was just talking about, that.
When I worked there, every year, we blew those out, we hit it, I don't know if they still do them, but they had an exercise. We go around every gate valve and exercise.
Trust me, after we went, went, went through, we, we, we're gonna have a little sit-down after, you know, this whole thing, with everything involved. And we're gonna look at the problem that we had, the maps, not know, or not knowing the way that these things were. The facts that the gate valves weren't cleaned out, and look at everything, just to see, you know, they did a stellar job, we got it done, but. Maybe we could have done it a little more efficiently and known what was going on.
I said in the past about Pena Chuck, about doing over so many hires a year.
Yeah.
And the gate valve and stuff, so you know about it, how come they weren't. Watched and made jewelry.
So we can be watching all the departments a little more.
Yes, so that's gonna be part of the new contract with the, with the, with the.
Yes.
Yep.
To go to um, the website, the different website, I had a couple of people yesterday come to me. And after the water main break and stuff, there was a big post on Facebook of, you know, what happened and how good, and what he did and stuff. And so, well, how come there's never anything on there about fire?
Give us something to put out. Access to your, your website.
We're lucky to have everybody, we know that.
I, I agree, I, I, I don't care about Facebook, I, I won't. Most of it, I don't care, but some people said, how come there's none of that?
Well, I think that's, next time we have something like that, or an event. Or an event. No, no, but John, I think that's a good point, you know, do, do some recognition when something happens.
They also have access to their own page, they utilize.
Okay, so you can add to your own page.
They've had it since it's been up.
That's on Facebook?
No, that's on.
Well, I'm saying, this is the Facebook post.
Oh, all you have to do is let us know. I mean, but you guys have your Woodstock Fire Department Facebook that you guys usually always share too.
And I, I tell the class, it's everything you put on there, people.
Trust me, I know.
We don't post for any other, any department unless we're asked to.
No, John, that's great. I think that's great, cuz the once, one thing you've got is to come write, read things like that there, and you wanna keep that loyalty, all that going. And I think, to do some good posts like that would be great, I really do, but we need the info, and, cuz we don't know what's going on down there. Half the time, so, most of the time, so.
They do, they, well, they have their Facebook page, and then they, um, they have access to the website too.
Sure.
And then all they have to do is just ask us, if they want something posted, we'll post there, let us know, we'll share.
Yep.
It's a good place too to put your, under that news and announcements on there, right now, it's got just a brief fundraiser from twenty nineteen, but you could put your lobster fest on that part. And all of that too. Someone needs some more training, they can come back and we can show them again how to access there and get on there.
Yep.
Um, one other quick thing, the sign, did you make the decision to pass it on to them about the sign?
Yeah, oh, I thought that Cheryl had told me that, didn't you confirm that it was okay for the song?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I think, did I not get back to you on the sign?
No.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry, I thought you had.
My apologies, I thought we were, I thought we were doing it internally.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
And you, you're gonna do the removable one, where in the winter time?
Yeah.
Or put it on wheels or whatever it was, yeah.
Nope. No.
No, we are non-public for that.
Okay.
Yep. Um, we were, you were looking for the contact for that sign person, did you ever reach out to him for that as well?
Not yet, I think I'm gonna do that after, Mike.
At some point, if you wouldn't mind giving the contact information on that, on the sub, sign person that you're using, cuz we were talking about some other signage in town that we may like to contact at an individual point.
You didn't want to pull it off?
Yeah.
Yeah, looking for somebody.
Yeah, that'd be great. At least so we can get two quotes.
Mike has a.
Yes, Mike?
Yes, I just wanted, I don't wanna repeat myself here, but um, just backing up a little bit, when you were talking about um, the problems you had finding valves and so forth the other night with your problem that you had. That's where this GPS equipment that you have, I think it's very, very, you need to get everybody trained with it right away, and there's no better time than right now. Winter time, you're not really having terrible amount of work out there for them to do. They ought to be running around locating all this stuff that's available to be located, it ain't buried under a snowbank. But it'd be a great time, get them trained now that you got the equipment, and start building a data system for this stuff, and, and what a great time to do it, when coming into spring, when there's really not a whole lot of work to be done, and you're always trying to find work to do. This would be a great thing to do, and, and I, I just hope that somebody looks into it and moves forward, thank you.
Yep, thank you. No, that's okay. Were you gonna, the EV chargers?
Oh, EV chargers, all this, it's on the warrant, I think we should, what we have is we've got a grant, uh, to pay for eighty percent of for AV charges in the municipal parking lot. Uh, and it was just funded, the state just said all this things funded, we're probably gonna get that funded. But um what's happened is they stopped all grant programs, the federal government has. So it's up in the, they haven't stopped it for sure, but it's up in the air. Uh, so I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, I think we should keep it on the warrant in case it does come back. Whatever, it, it, they would pay uh eighty percent of putting them in.
What a perfect.
About eighty thousand dollars, and it was a nice time, because we're hearing them talk a lot anyway, to put the road in.
No, the water line.
The water line and stuff like that, I mean, well, it's a road, a new road.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, but anyway, uh, all funding is stopped, all, all, not just these projects, but all kinds of projects, so. And they're up for review, it's not necessarily dead, but they're all gonna be up for review, so.
What's it that, what is it up for review?
I don't know. But I think, what, we should leave it on the line, and then if we get the money, we get it, if we don't, we don't.
Yeah.
But where would you put it?
Right, when you're down on our street, just on the right there. Right, put four right there, and then you could plow, then it wouldn't affect plowing or anything, just go over and buy them, so.
Do you own the pipeline?
Well.
Do you own the?
Yes.
Well, we have a reverter.
Yeah. We do, and we make money off them.
Yeah.
At some point, yeah.
But I, I had mentioned back when the water line down in the truance there broke, that why don't you put on and go across the parking lot, I was told, because I would not own that parking lot that you could.
Well, we have a reverter.
We have a reverter closet.
Yeah, so why can't you put the water line up there?
It's not going across it, going right on the edge of it, so they could just be barred out.
It's all done, the, the water line's going down there this spring, we've got all the, finally got everything all done. I don't know, some reason the engineers wanted you to do it this way, I, you know.
And the public participants on the agenda? Items? Being non-public, we will go into non-public session at nine twenty-six AM on the RS A ninety-one dash A colon three, numeral two, A, B, and C, and we will not come back into public session after. Oh, no.
I don't.
No, we will not come back into public session after that. Thank you, good to see you both.
Make a good day.
You too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Catch up on some reading.
Um, and recording.